Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to a combined Spokane City Council briefing session and legislative session. I'll make it clear when we're officially in the legislative session, but for now, we're going to be in briefing. But why don't you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Ms. Pfister, can you call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Sorry. Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. And again, in this kind of hybrid meeting, we're going to start with two proclamations. The first is Autism Awareness Month. Councilmembers Zepone, if Ally Spaziali is here, you can come up to the microphone. Councilmembers Zepone will read it, and then we'll give you a chance to address us. So thanks for being here. Councilmembers Zepone.
Okay. Whereas autism is the fastest growing of all childhood disabilities, and the prevalence rate far exceeds the prevalence rates of diabetes, AIDS, childlike cancer, cystic fibrosis, cerebral palsy, muscular dystrophy, or Down's syndrome combined, the real day-to-day challenges occur in our families, neighborhoods, schools, and communities. The causes are undetermined, current treatments are not fully accessible, and there is no known cure. And whereas autism is a lifelong spectrum disorder occurring in one in every 36 children which knows no racial, ethnic, or social-economic boundaries, and has an immense impact on essential human experiences such as the ability to show and receive affection, to imagine a way to ask for help, to make a friend, to play, speak, understand, and most importantly, to belong. And whereas for every person diagnosed with autism, hundreds are touched, and the impact of autism varies greatly from person to person, challenging our community's response to each individual living with autism. To that end, Northwest Autism Center joins hands with Spokane's Autism Society of Washington, the Isaac Foundation, and our other local community agencies, families, providers, educators, and all those touched in our communities to make a difference today. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Autism Awareness Month in Spokane and encourage all citizens to recognize and join hands in improving the quality of life of people with autism spectrum disorders.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
All right. And if you want to introduce yourself and who you brought with you and share a few words with us, we appreciate it.
Of course. I'm Ally Spaziali, the Community Connections Manager at Northwest Autism Center.
Julie Perry from the Autism Society of Washington.
And Maria Jennings from the Isaac Foundation.
Yeah, so we thank you for being here today and for this Autism Awareness proclamation. The artwork presented on the poster was created by Jonas Elber. He is a Spokane native, actively involved in the community, and is a dad to a four-year-old son with autism. This is his first time trying his hand at creating art, but says he really enjoyed the experience. The artwork features an ode to the lilac city with three lilacs made out of puzzle pieces. It represents a sense of community, diversity, and coming together from all different walks of life. Autism currently affects 1 in 36 individuals, with those numbers rising nearly every year. It's crucial that families receive early intervention as it affords the best opportunity to support healthy development and deliver benefits across the lifespan. Having equal access to services, resources, and advocacy is vital, regardless of geographical location, race, or income. We are so proud to be a part of this community, and we thank you all for all of the support you have given us.
Thank you.
I'm Julie Perry with the Autism Society of Washington. The Autism Society is the oldest autism group in Washington State. We were formed in 1992, and we want to thank all the people in our community that help people with autism. We have Riverfront Park. We had our Walk for Autism yesterday, and it was a beautiful experience. Thank you for having the beautiful park there. We also have lots of people that get help from the Spokane Parks and Rec Department, especially the Therapeutic Recreation Center. The Spokane Public Schools help educate our children, and many nonprofits also help people with different disabilities. Our mission is to create connections, empowering everybody in the autism community with the resources they need to live fully. Thank you very much for all your help.
All right. Thanks. All right. And next, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. Councilmember Kinnear is going to read that, and one of the city's arborists, Katie Kosinki, is going to come down.
Welcome, Katie. Whereas following a proposal by J. Sterling Morton, the first Arbor Day took place on April 10, 1872, in Nebraska, with more than 1 million trees planted and is now observed throughout the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion by wind and water over precious topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air and water, produce oxygen, increase the life of our roads, and provide habitat for wildlife. Trees are also a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, and fuel for our fires while increasing property values, enhancing the economic vitality of business environments, improving human health and well-being, and beautifying our community. And whereas Spokane is one of more than 3,400 communities designated as Tree City USA, now therefore, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day in Spokane, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands by supporting our city's community forestry program and helping to maintain our trees as they help provide quality of life for present and future generations. You want to pull that microphone down just a bit and say a few words?
Sure. Yes, well, thank you so much. I really appreciate that. What a lovely proclamation. Just so thankful to be part of a community that just is full of tree supporters who recognize the many environmental, social, economic, and human health benefits that trees provide. And I'd just like to invite everyone to come to our Arbor Day celebration this weekend on Saturday, April 29, at Fitch Arboretum, from 11 to 2:00. We'll be having music, a compost fair, activities, education, a climbing demonstration by Bartlett, who is also a sponsor and giving away free seedlings, lots of art activities, all sorts of things, a Tree City USA ceremony. It's our 20th year, so that'll be at noon. And then we've got free kettle corn and coffee and cocoa for the first 100 or 150 or so, sponsored by Trailhead Tree Service, so we appreciate them, and we hope everyone will come out and join us for some fun and celebrating our trees this Saturday. Thank you so much.
All right. We're going to transition to briefing for May 1, and then agenda adjustments for April 24. So City Administrator Johnny Perkins.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the City Council, Johnny Perkins, City Administrator. Monday, May 1, advance briefing agenda. Item number one on the consent agenda, contract with Northwest Development Group, doing business as Guardian Roofing and Exteriors for the roof replacement at Fire Stations 16 and 17. Our presenter is Fire Chief David Stockdale.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President. Council. Fires ask and for your approval, as Mr. Perkins said, for the replacement of two roofs at Fire Stations 16 and 17 with Guardian Roofing. The total cost per station with tax is about $54,537. Guardian Roofing was the low bidder of three bids received. That's it, unless you have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Item number two on the consent agenda, public works contract with McClintock &amp; Turk for the Nelson Facility Compressed Natural Gas Fuel System Expansion. Our presenter is our Director of Fleet Services, Mr. Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, Council. We are expecting to receive at least 17 additional compressed natural gas refuse trucks in the next year or so, which will bring the total number of CNG trucks in our fleet up to 61, since the initial project to build the CNG fueling site back in 2015 only included 50 spaces. We've reached the point where we need to add some more capacity. We issued a public works bid for the expansion project and received one response from McClintock &amp; Turk here in Spokane. Total project cost is estimated at $195,451.30 plus tax, which includes a 10% administrative reserve. Any questions on that?
What's the mix? What will be the mix with those new trucks, as far as how many are CNG versus not CNG?
So once we... We have about 110 trucks. A lot of... A few of those are spares, so adding those new trucks will give us 61, so it's going to be about 60%. And of course, we've got more coming on the way. And of course, next week, we're going to talk a little bit about RNG, which is going to make things even better.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. The next two items are from the Facilities Department. Item three is a new site lease agreement with DISH Network for the water tower. Item four is a contract amendment with TransBlue for landscaping and snow and ice removal at the Intermodal facility. Our presenter is Mr. Dave Steele.
Good afternoon, Council President. Councilmembers. As Johnny mentioned, item number three, we've got a new site lease agreement. This goes on an existing water tower that currently has cell tower installations, but what is new is this is the DISH network. I believe this is the second site lease agreement they have enacted under their master lease agreement that we put into place last year. So this expands their ability to provide cell coverage at the south Lamont kind of region, so the revenues from that go back into the Water Department for their own use. Any questions? All right. Number four, the TransBlue contract, that is the contract that provides landscape and snow and ice removal at the Intermodal. With last winter, the winter we had actually pushed us up and over our contracted amount, so what we're coming before you is to bring that contract amount up to $52,000 that gets us through the rest of 2023. You'll notice in the documents you received earlier, the total amount was 37 something. That was a typo. It should have included the $15,000 that gets us through the rest of the year rather than the smaller amount. Any questions?
That doesn't mean we're going to have more snow and ice, right?
I'm not going to talk about the weather, try to predict the weather right now. I'm kind of... We're struggling on... Facilities isn't very good at that, so...
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Item five, report of the mayor pending claims and payments or previously approved obligations, including those for Parks and Library. Those amounts will be filled in and completed for the council's consideration on Monday, May 1. Item six is the City Council Meeting Minutes, which will also be prepared and available for council consideration on Monday, May 1. Our last item on the Monday, May 1 consent briefing agenda under first reading ordinances is concerning an ordinance relating for the purposes of drug-related activity and the unauthorized use of controlled substances in public spaces... Places, and are turned over to Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've briefed this before. Not much to add. That being said, I would like to make a motion in light of the legislature failing to get a bill passed yesterday, which was the deadline, I would like to move that we move up our final reading to next Monday, the 1st. And, well, I'll add more later.
Can you second that? I will second for the purpose of discussion, but I will be out of town next week, and so I prefer that it's not next week. I prefer it to be May 8, but...
Well, I'm making the motion just because I think it's really important that we address this and address it quickly. I think the legislature failing to act, while I know it doesn't... The law doesn't change overnight. It will take a couple of weeks before that changes. I do think the failure to enact something, and we have no idea how long a special session would have to go on for, or how long it will take for a negotiation to come to fruition. And so, to me, this is an urgency, and I think we need to act as quickly as we can. If the first is not an option, then of course, we'll stick with the eighth, but I really think that we have to move quickly on this.
Councilmembers.
Yeah, I definitely understand the need with the legislature failing to act. I would actually like to keep the same thing because I think we might have to do more than just this because of that. So I think that having the longer timeline gives us some time to potentially look at more changes that would be necessary in the face of the legislature failing to act.
No, I hear that, and I've asked the city attorney to help draft a second ordinance that would address some other aspects of drug law that now will fall on the city to deal with. But I think that the open drug use issue is probably the most important, the most critical that we face, and so to me, I don't want to slow this down. I think it needs to move quick. I think the other... We can bring that forward as a second ordinance.
Yeah, I was also just going to echo Councilmember Zepone that I would rather... I think there's some issues with this one that don't really stand up the legal scrutiny, in my opinion. I'm not the lawyer for the city, obviously, but I would like some time to come up with something that's more comprehensive. I hear chatter that there might be a special session, but I still think we should get something that is in place by July 1, regardless of that. And so I would be opposed to moving up final vote so that we can just have something that's more comprehensive on the 8th as opposed to doing it piecemeal, but that's just me.
Well, with no other interest, and I understand the complication with my seatmate's schedule, so I'll withdraw the motion, but just to emphasize, I do think this is a matter of urgency, and I don't want to wait till July 1. I think we have to do it much before then.
Councilmember Kinnear?
I do agree. July 1 is too late. I think we need haste, but I want to be more comprehensive, and I'd rather have this done right than do it piecemeal and have it challenged or have something else get in the way where we have to retract and start all over again. So, but I understand. I agree. July 1 is too late.
Councilmember Bingle?
I'll just jump in and say the ordinance, I don't think, is piecemeal or that it's bad. We ran it through City Legal. We had our lawyers actually send us...
That's not what it said.
...memos. Oh, I know. I've just heard a couple of things.
He's responding to me.
Yeah, I've heard a couple of things up here. The ordinance is well drafted. It would do a very good job for the community. I would also like to move it up as soon as possible. The unfortunate thing is that I will just be out of town on that date, but it is absolutely the most important issue that was in the state legislature. The fact that nothing happened is a massive failure on the part of the state legislature. I also expect that they'll call a special session for that. But again, these are things that... What I'm learning in government is people are always looking for what are other people doing, what has been successful. And so I think that, again, in the way that as Spokane leads, Washington follows, I think that this is a great way for us to demonstrate to the state legislature, here's a very good piece of policy, follow our lead, and go here. And so I don't think there's anything wrong with the ordinance in and of itself. I appreciate Councilmember Cathcart and his efforts on this to bring it forward because, again, it's a very important piece of legislation.
And I'm just on the legal... The complication is that there's existing law at the state that apparently, according to the legal opinion I saw, preempts this, so it makes it very questionable, not because it's written incorrectly, but just in relation. And that's why July 1... We want to get something in place as soon as we can, but I don't know that before July 1, anything could be pursued legitimately in court on it, and I hate to get the community's expectations up for something that would be found illegal. And we could get some clarification from City Legal, but so far, we haven't gotten that yet, or at least I haven't seen that yet. That's my concern about the legal piece. But, all right, you withdrew that, so I think we're done then with the May 1. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for May 1?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question.
Was there a timeline to consider the public records resolution that we were briefed earlier or for later?
That hasn't been... Nobody's put that in on base yet.
All right. Do you have an anticipated time you'd like, or...
The sponsors would have to put it in on base.
Okay.
All those in favor of adopting...
Council President, are you not a sponsor of that?
I am, but I haven't put it in on base.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was like, I thought there was three. Your name was...
Yeah. All those in favor of adopting the May 1st agenda?
Aye.
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 Any opposed nay? All right, the ayes have it. Oh, any abstentions? The ayes have it. Okay, that is adopted. There's some requests for changes to today's agenda, and there is essentially a request to add three resolutions regarding airport, and we have airport folks to present on that. And then there's one for the proposed new location of the treatment center, a letter on that as a special consideration, and also, we're going to... Would have, if put on the agenda, a report from the clerk on a new initiative that was filed. But in order to add those things, I would need a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adding things to our legislative agenda tonight.
Move for rule suspension?
Second.
Any discussion?
For the purpose of adding these specific items?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add resolutions 32, 33, and 34?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
For the purpose of adding these specific items?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add resolutions 32, 33, and 34?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, those are added. And is there a motion to add considerations S1 and S2?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Council President, question. For S2, the initiative one, our understanding is that we could adopt that as a council. If we add it to the agenda today, do we have to choose today to adopt that, or can we do it at a future date?
You can always do it at a future date, but today, you would be putting it on the agenda for us to get the report.
Right, 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 right.
We're getting the report, and then there are two actions we could take. We don't... So it's not like that we would vote up or down on this, but someone could bring a motion to adopt it as is. Someone could bring a motion to adopt... Or to add it to the ballot, and if neither of those two things happen, then it just automatically goes to the hearing examiner and the rest of the process for signature gathering and things like that.
If we did not add it to the agenda today, would it... Could it be added to an agenda next week for a week to discuss a potential adoption of it?
It's supposed to be at the next available meeting, so I think it would be better if we did it. But it doesn't preclude us up until a certain point in time. It doesn't preclude us from taking those other actions. All right. So the motion, I think it was seconded, to add the two special considerations. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of adding them to our agenda for today?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed nay? Any abstentions? All right, those are added. Actually, just as a point of personal privilege, I had the opportunity to judge the FBLA state competition last week, and I was doing parliamentary procedure. I thought I would know something about it, but my fellow judge really knew something about it, was just an amazing expert, Kevin Connolly, from the west side of the state. And I passed out a few of his brochures, if you saw those, of all the motions and different things. But one of the things he told me, and I don't know if I'll remember to do it all the time, is that "No longer do you say nay, you say no." So if you start hearing me change that to no, that is based on the advice of a more expert parliamentarian than myself.
Can you tell us why? Because that is from the Scottish nay.
I'm sorry for our Scottish heritage, but apparently, the current practice is no.
It's conformed.
And then, I think in the legislature, they do that, because I've been watching this last few weeks, and they get pretty rambunctious on the nos. Yep.
What about aye? Do we still say aye?
It's still aye.
It's still aye.
It's still aye.
So is it no or no?
Depends how strongly you feel about it.
That's right.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Did you add the letter from the Health Board to this?
We just did, yeah.
Did you?
It is there.
The Health Board?
Special consideration number one, that was. We added it.
That's to the Health Board?
No, it's not to the Health Board. It's about the Health Board, but we're going to hear from the Health Board in a few minutes.
I'm sorry. Special consideration one I'm reading says, "A Letter to Mike Fruci."
No, we did that.
You have an old agenda. There was a misprint in the agenda. We did that last week, and in the old agenda, it said it was Mike Fruci, but this agenda... But it had the letter to the Health Board in the packet, but that was just an error in the clerk's office, which they corrected. But I'm glad you brought that up in case anyone else is under that misapprehension.
Yeah, because I voted to add that to the agenda thinking that's what it was. I don't know what the Health...
You have an old agenda. There was a misprint in the agenda. We did that last week, and in the old agenda, it said it was Mike Fruci. But this agenda, but it had the letter to the Health Board in the packet, but that was just an error in the clerk's office, which they corrected. But I'm glad you brought that up, in case anyone else is under that misapprehension.
Yeah. Because I voted to add that to the agenda, thinking that's what it was. I don't know what the Health Board letter is.
All right.
I see a packet, yeah. I'm curious what this was.
If you have a access to a computer, you might want to look at it, so.
It would have been added either way.
Yeah.
Is there, is there anybody who can answer questions on the letter?
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah, so, two things. The Health Board is here, they will present about what they're proposing, and then, council members can talk about the letter. So, all right. That said, I'm gonna go to briefing now, and we'll start with the airport. So, Mr. Crowder, if you would like to come down and brief on those three resolutions. And after that, we'll hear from the Health District.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, members of council. Have three items to brief today. The first is a granting of a water utility easement to the city of Spokane. This is the approximate location. You'll note that there are currently two water towers and one under construction in the Airport Business Park. And that land was sold last year, or sorry, 2021, to the city. And that gives you a good location of where the easement is running to and from. The easement will cross airport property at Geiger Boulevard, and then proceed across airport property to the north, and then run along Pilot Drive, and then Waypoint Boulevard to the city's water property. It's about 2.13 acres. There will be no charge to the city for that easement, and that was placed into the purchase and sale agreement in 2021, when the city purchased the land for the water towers. Any questions on that one? Very good. Second one is conveyance of land to Spokane County for Craig Road improvements. It's about nine and a half acres. As you have heard previously, the county intends to come in to Craig Road and construct significant improvements to add to vehicle safety and ease of access to the transload facility. So, this project would provide right-of-way, border easement, and slope easement to the county. That's the new section of roadway that would be constructed in Phase 1 by the county to bypass 290-degree intersections at Craig and Thorpe. And again, just a summary of the different categories of the conveyance. This would be a dollar conveyance, several details regarding due diligence, title review periods, and closing. We intend to close rather quickly on this, because the county would like to get started on those roadway improvements very soon. And this dashed line that you see here, that I'm outlining with the cursor, is the bypass, again, just a different view of that bypass area running north and south on Craig. Any questions on that item? Not all proceed to the last item, which is the purchase and sale agreement with OFP LLC. The city council previously approved the sale of about 38.46 acres of land in 2020, and this is the land that surrounds that area, right off of Craig Road, near the transload facility. So, a lot of details around the conditions, but the purchase price is $2,378,195.43, 63.27 acres, and then a series of details around closing, potential purchases of extensions, if the buyer would like to have extensions, and then due diligence periods. Happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions for Mr. Crowder? Okay, you have briefed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
All right, now, we have representatives from the Health District. And I'll note that we got a package here for the meeting. You guys, as, I asked them to just give us a, kind of a thumbnail of what they had in mind, and then they're available to answer any questions.
So, I will just do the brief introduction. Council President, council members, thank you for having us. I am Kevin Freeman. I am currently the Chair of the Board of Health for the Spokane Regional Health District. I have with me Misty Chaloner, our Director of the Opioid Treatment Program for Spokane Regional Health District, and we are here to answer any questions regarding the move or relocation of the opioid treatment program from the current Spokane Regional Health District campus to the 8th Street property, as it is currently defined. So, I will turn this over to Misty. She can give you some background in the whys behind what we are doing, and where we are now in the process of moving. We have reviewed the letter that Council, Councilmember Wilkerson and Council President Beggs delivered to the Washington State Board of Health as, under the comment period for relocation and relicensing at this area, or this location. And so, there are some questions in there, Misty can speak to those. But just a general background of why we are undertaking this move and how we got to this place. So, Misty, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Council President, thank you for your time this afternoon. My name is Misty Chaloner, and I'm the Division Director for Treatment Services at Spokane Regional Health District. I've had the honor to work with the program for the last 15 years, and during that time, I've seen this program grow exponentially throughout the opioid epidemic. What we've seen over the last several years is that the opioid epidemic has not stopped during COVID. It has exponentially increased the need for services in our community. And with that, our program has grown to provide services to upwards of 1,100 individuals in our community currently. And with that, we have a limited amount of space within the current campus at 1101 West College. And approximately three years ago, we began having initial discussions on relocating the Treatment Services Program in order to meet the needs of the community and expansion of additional services to help provide a foundational recovery program for individuals in need of recovery services. Those individuals suffering with opioid use disorder face stigma, they face all kinds of barriers, and when they do find themselves in the position that they're ready to reach out for care, it's imperative that we greet them where they're at right then. With that, and the need to expand, we were fortunate enough to be able to find the 312 West 8th Avenue location, and that new location will provide us the opportunity to not only expand our current services, but to offer additional services as well. The packet of information that you have in front of you offers not only the history of this move from the initial stages of conversation, it offers a timeline of events-
Misty, I'm just gonna interrupt, and I'm so sorry, but we're hearing some chatter in the audience, so if you want to talk, that is fine, but if you could do it outside, so that we can give our guests their full attention. Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
So, within this packet, there's a multitude of components of information. I wanted to ensure that you had as much information, information as I could provide you right off of the bat, and being able to answer any questions. It's a program that is drastically misunderstood across, not only our state, but across the country. I serve on the Washington State Association for the Treatment of Opioid Dependents, and I attend the National Board meetings for this. This is something that is very near and dear to most people in our community and to most everyone. So, I know that is a very broad overview, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Can you, so only some of us have been on the Health Board, or, but at least half of us have not. So, could you tell us what the services you provide, like how that operates on a daily basis? Because I don't think most people understand that.
Absolutely. So, the opioid treatment program provides opioid use disorder treatment, or medication-assisted treatment, to individuals who are struggling. And what that entails is not only medication, there's counseling, individual counseling, group therapy, there's medical staff on site for daily observation, there's medical staff on site for dosivals, to follow up with the emergency room departments, to follow up with specialists, primary care providers. We have an opioid mental health program that provides mental health services to our individuals as well. We have individuals that are our clinical assistants who observe urinalysis testing. They provide essentially crowd control in our clinic when we get a large number of individuals in the space that we have. They provide breathalyzers, urinalysis testing. We also do our own internal labs, blood draws. We provide EKGs on site for our patients, so we don't have to refer out. We are trying to do as much to offer full, comprehensive services internally, instead of having to refer out, so that the individuals can actually be successful and follow through.
I want, just one thought. Can you, and then I'll go to Councilmember Stratton, and then Wilkerson, but in terms of how many people are coming daily to receive their dosage? I'm just curious what's that-
On any given day, Monday through Friday, we see upwards between 500 and 600 individuals coming through.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Stratton?
So, can you talk a little bit about, I'm looking at the packet, and there was a letter that was sent in relations to how close it is to the school? I mean, is there any, how do you deal with that kind of a facility? And I think Lewis and Clark is right there. I mean, how does that?
Six blocks.
Six blocks?
Six blocks, correct. So, our individual, our program actually opens for operations at 5:15 a.m., and daily dispensing happens from 5:15 till noon, and the majority of our individuals are already gone prior to 9 a.m., generally speaking. And then, services that are offered throughout the rest of the day are completely done at this point in time by 2 p.m. So, as far as the interaction with the community, it is minimal, but we also have security on site that do perimeter checks, they keep an eye on what's going on. Our individuals do not generally tend to cause issues in the community. Again, that's where the stigma comes in, and a lot of our individuals face that on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Can I just quickly make a point to Ms. Stratton's comment? It is, I would, I would inform the council that as part of this work, or as part of this relocation, we did work with the city of Spokane, planning and zoning. This is an allowed use under your current zoning for that location. It meets all setbacks, all requirements. So, just for point of legislation and point of, point of rule, there is, it is, it conforms with all current requirements.
And it also looks like you worked with Spokane Public Schools as well.
Misty's handling the outreach.
Yeah, the community outreach piece is, yeah.
Yes. I'm actually currently in process of getting a meeting set up. Dr. Swinyard has reached back out to me, and we're trying to get a date and time set.
Perfect, thanks.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
So, in addition to the counseling, the treatment, so is that pill-form medication, injection-form medication? What is the medication delivery?
So, the predominant form of medication is liquid methadone, which, liquid methadone is only prescribed through the opioid treatment program. Methadone that is prescribed by a physician for, say, pain management is generally prescribed in the form of either a wafer or a pill.
Thank you. And thank you for reaching out, because I ran into Dr. Swinyard this weekend on several, twice. And when I spoke to him the first time, which was earlier last week, he had no idea of what was going on in the area about the opioid treatment center. And then, when I spoke to him again, he said that you had reached out, and we just discussed some of the concerns. And mostly, not that what the treatment is doing, but just the traffic of going up past the school, even if they're completed by noon, that's great, but that, that's a significant number of people every day that's going into that neighborhood and out, along with some of the other physical constraints I was concerned about, was parking and accessibility on a bus route to get there, and how those are going to be mitigated. And my last question is, I was on the Health Board when this conversation started, and at the time, you were looking for space, and when COVID happened, there was no realignment within the Health District that would allow for expansion of this treatment center. Currently, where it's at, where they are familiar? So, no room for growth where you're at?
Correct.
I mean, we've all experienced, like, lack of usage in our building space. So, we were, I was wondering if that had happened at the Health District, where you could have remodeled to accommodate this growth and expansion versus a total relocation?
Unfortunately, no, that was not something that was feasible, due to the need that other programs and divisions had as well. Throughout COVID, again, I can only speak to my department, Treatment Services specifically had a need. We currently have staffing of upwards of 65 individuals, and to be able to offer additional space for more staff, for growth, for additional services, there was not that available. If I may address the piece on parking and transportation, the 312 West 8th Avenue location actually offers a much better opportunity for parking, as there is a parking space, parking lot available for staff, and then there's parking around the building that is specifically designated for patient parking, whereas the current location does not have that. The current location has the metered parking and the county lot parking that's the H-Lot park. As far as transportation, we have actually been already reestablished communication with STA in order, in hopes of relocating the bus stop, which once was right in front of the door to that specific address, and we're hoping to have that put back in place with the collaboration efforts of STA.
Thank you. Just for clarification, that is the old detox location?
Correct.
Which is right down from Sacred Heart.
So, prior to Councilmember Cathcart, I just would like to say one thing, and I'd asked Misty to speak to this. One of the things is, it's not just we're out of space where we are, but the level of demand for our services, there's no room to expand. And I think, Misty, we're at 1,100, we could easily get to-
I, I would anticipate that if we had the space to be able to bring on the staffing, we could expand services and have relatively, I say quickly, in a loose sense, but we could expand up to 1,300 to 1,500 in a relatively quick timeframe.
So, we, we as a community, as a region, have a serious unmet need for providing OTP services to our citizens that need it. And we are totally out of room at the district. I would also hearken back to folks who were at the Health Board at that time, when we were having these discussions, that part of the analysis of why we were moving was based on an analysis of the location of the clients. And the local, the centroid of our clients was much more in the area of the 8th Street, this side of the city, as opposed to the county campus, or the Health District campus in that area over there on the north side of the river. So, this was not done simply because it was an available building. There was a detailed study of where our, where our clients come from, where they need to be serviced, et cetera.
I'll let Mr. Cathcart, or Councilmember Cathcart, and then Councilmember Kinnear, but can you, when you get a chance, email us that study on the, where the clients are, whatever that basis, it'd be good to do that. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, and that kind of relates to my main question, which is, what was the process that you went through? What was the public engagement like? How long did it go on for? How many other sites have you looked at? If this were to not happen, this location, for whatever reason, hearing what you're saying about the existing location, obviously, that's not going to be an option. So, you'll be going somewhere, and so I'm wondering, what are your second, third alternatives, if you have them? Kind of what are, what are you looking at?
So, this has been an extensive process, and again, I, I, these conversations began back in approximately July of 2020, and then, the approvals to start searching out locations. We, I was actually part of several building tours with Kimmel and Haygood. I believe there was upwards of seven or more different locations. However, real estate was a commodity that was not readily available, especially in the communities that services are needed. There was definitely real estate available outside of the main areas of town that the patient population are predominantly residing. As far as a secondary or tertiary options, at this point in time, we don't have any backup plans. This particular location, and as Councilmember Wilkerson pointed out, was previously the detox center. It has housed the STARS program and some other additional recovery services as well.
And then, just to follow up, if there was, I guess, legislative authority to do so, would this ever be like a safe injection, or a safe consumption-type location?
At this point in time, that's not something that's been a point of discussion. Again, that's a legislative issue. That's not something that currently we even have had discussions surrounding.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kinnear?
Yeah, thank you for, both of you for coming and explaining this a little better. I'm concerned that, when you said that you could easily, you foresee that this program will grow, so is this facility, would it be able to accommodate additional people, and over time, it might grow even larger? So, is this expandable, or would you have to move again in a couple of years because you've outgrown this space? That's the first question. The second question is regarding, most people, I assume, are driving there? Or are they going to be taking the bus? Do you have a sense of that?
A combination. It depends on time of day.
Okay.
Early morning individuals generally are drivers.
Of course. So, a half hour, so STA, that route is a half-hour frequency, and if you're- And if you're going to have, have the conversation about moving the bus stop, you might want to have the conversation about frequency as well in that space. Is it 15?
It's 15. It's the four.
Okay. Okay. Well, super duper.
No, it's just, it's down Grand.
Okay.
To the Plaza.
But that's not all day?
During?
Till noon.
Week, weekdays, it's all day.
Okay. Never mind. But the first one, I'm, I'm curious.
So, and just to, just to speak to the, to the accommodation of clients. We, at the health district, Board of Health, all of us understand that we have clients everywhere. And we would hope ultimately that other jurisdictions would recognize the fact that they also have a population that needs treatment, and that we could look for other locations that could tend to serve those other clients, maybe in adjacent jurisdictions at some point. But right now, what we have to do is, we have to look at, there is a lot of moving parts with licensing, with security, with meeting federal requirements, with meeting state requirements, all those sorts of things. And so we realize that this is one step in a process of combating this epidemic and looking at dispersing treatment services throughout the region of Spokane Regional Health District. This is a little awkward of a program in some respects, because I informed the council that does not understand this. We are only, what, one of two? Three public entities that provide opioid treatment. All other opioid treatment is done on a private basis. So this is a unique position for Spokane Regional Health District to be in. But over time, we've become the prime provider of opioid treatment services for this area. And as we know, we have an issue, and we need to step up to what we're doing.
And I'll just ask on that, Mayor Freeman, when we still were on the health board, there was some discussion about trying to spin it off from the health district. Is the health district committed to retaining this for the foreseeable future?
I would say that might be a question for the local health jurisdiction, primary funding source, which would be Spokane County. I don't know if that question will be brought out to any, any, any point of discussion or fruition anytime soon. It certainly is something that has been talked about. Right now, as most of you know, we are in the process of transitioning our administrative officer. We hope to have an administrative officer in place by the, hopefully by the middle of this year. We hope to have somebody, somebody, a suitable candidate hired and, and in place. I think at that point, that would then bring that discussion back to the fold. We've kind of, we had talked about that. I'm not really sure where the will or the drive was from any of the, any of the individuals that would will and drive that discussion forward.
Just one slight follow up. I was assuming this was owned by the county, but it looks like maybe another company owns it now.
Yes, this, this building was formerly owned by the county. It was divested by the county. After it was divested by the county, it then came on the market, and that's when Spokane Regional Health District looked at this, primarily given its proximity to medical providers and the fact that it was a former treatment site. I think for Ms. Wilkerson, Ms. Stratton, and Mr. Beggs, when you were on the count, when you were on the Board of Health, the, the original site that we looked at was the Global Credit Union Building. And that, just for real estate purposes at that time, just, we weren't nimble enough, we weren't fast enough, we didn't have deep enough pockets, apparently. And so that slipped away. But when we had the opportunity to come up for the 8th Street after the county divested itself out of there, that was the point that was brought forth at the time, and individuals...
Is this a purchase, though, or a lease?
Lease. Lease, lease, lease. I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I don't mean to, I'm sorry if I confuse that. But as we've discussed and has been provided in the Board of Health minutes, things like that, that was brought forward when City of Spokane members were still part of the Board of Health at that time.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
I was going to say, first of all, thank you, Misty, for last minute showing up, and Mayor Freeman for reaching out. My concern was that really only Council President and myself really knew of this, and somewhat Councilmember Stratton. So even though we responded, Council President Beggs and myself, we felt it was necessary that the whole council understood what was going on and had a chance to thumbs up, thumbs down, support. But we do know legislatively, this council probably could not stop that treatment center going in. It's already been zoned. So in many ways, we're just adding support or not support.
And just to clarify, when we first got something from the Department of Health, not the local, but the state, they said we had to respond within, before we could bring it to the council. And so now we have brought a draft letter, but I would invite a motion to defer that for one week, so now that we have the information and we can talk about it and figure out what the council's thing. Right now, we essentially included the, the letter that Councilmember Wilkerson and I did.
I'd like to defer until you have a chance to talk to STA. Do you know us?
We have to do it by next week, though.
We do.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was going to ask, can, is a deferral for one week bad for you guys?
It's not them, it's the Board of Health statewide.
Yeah, we, we can do it for one week.
But it doesn't mess up.
So, so in full transparency, as Ms. Wilkerson said, Councilmember Wilkerson said, the way, I would say the way the Board of Health currently views this is, that is where the OTP program is going. We have had discussions with state, Washington State Department of Health. And unless the council raises a substantive objection to, to the location based on zoning, any of those types of things, it's pretty much going there. So we are moving forward on target with what we need to do to do that.
Okay. So weeks not going to mess you up?
We've promised a response by May 8th, May 9th.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I moved deferral for one week to relight the letter for council.
Eric, any discussion about the deferral for one week? Councilmember Cathcart?
If, if the letter, if the letter's going to continue, are we open to some edits?
No, totally. No, I, I anticipate after this meeting, there will be edits. Yeah, that's part of the purpose, because we have more information now than we had when we drafted it. Councilmember Bingle?
Again, not, not that everything is about me, but I will be out of town next week. And so for wanting all seven members to sign this, do we have time to defer to May 8th and then deliver on the 9th?
No, that's what I just asked.
Deadline was May 8th.
Deadline.
Said May 9th, is what I heard.
May 9th, anticipating that you would actually have voted on May 8th.
So we could do it on May 8th, is what you're saying? Okay. Do you want to amend your motion to May 8th?
I'm in my motion to May 8th.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay.
It is all about you.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, there's a motion on the table to defer Special Consideration 1 till May 8th for purposes of editing and further consultations on the letter. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right, great. Hey, thank you both so much for coming and your service.
Thank you for having us.
And good to see you.
We appreciate this time. Thank you all.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So that was the briefing on that. We don't need a briefing on the clerk's report, because you're just going to give us a report when we get there. All right. I think that brings us to the end of any agenda changes. And Mr. Perkins, I might, actually, we, we were going to have you here, but I might have to change you out, because I need?
Sure.
Mr. Byrd to come up here.
Good.
And do his thing.
Do his thing?
But...
It's a pleasure. Thank you. Thanks for coming back to do some other stuff.
All right, so we're going to transition to our legislative session. And just a reminder to people on council rules, although we did plenty of cheering on the proclamations, once we get into testimony, we don't cheer either for, or against, or boo, and not make any noises. You can wear t-shirts, buttons, and hats, but we don't allow the displaying of signs. We ask that you not bring up any private litigation matters in this business. We ask that you don't disparage anyone personally and individually, if you can address your comments to the chair. And then one thing I keep meaning to bring up, in, in response to your testimony, our council rules are that we generally do not respond to you or ask questions. So that's not because we don't care, we're, and that we're, and we're not trying to be rude, but that's just our rules. The one exception is that if a council member has a point of information that they want to share, based on that, they can, they can do that. But we generally don't respond to folks. That, if you could plug this in, Mr. Byrd, and is this for open forum? Yes, it is open forum. Okay, we have some folks for open forum, and I'll call you up in three people at a time, so the first person can come to the podium, and then the next two can come to the, hopefully the front of the room to be ready, so we don't waste a lot of time going back and forth. And again, open forum is two minutes, and it just needs to be something that's not on the current or next week's agenda, which is pretty easy, because there's hardly anything on those agendas. So first, Anwar Peace, then Ellis Kleinkoff, and then Laura Rentsch. All right, welcome to City Council.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Anwar Peace, a 23-year police accountability expert. I had not planned to come today, so I didn't write anything out. I'm just going to talk from the heart real quick. I'm here today in response to a noon press conference that I saw dealing with a possible resolution that you all might be going forward with, public records issues, dealing with our police department. And, you know, one of the things that I heard during that press conference was that for somehow, this issue is a political issue. And I would just like to retort this way. Public safety is not a political issue, and should not be a political football. Everyone at this table, in this building, should align themselves together and get a comprehensive plan on what it means to present public safety in this, in this community. Now, some in the community have suggested that police leadership might be an issue that is producing the deficiencies in our public safety, and I agree with that. And that's why I applaud this body for going forward with a possible resolution to look into this matter more closely. I think that sunlight is the best thing in the situation, and if you are a true police leader, you're not going to be looking at this possible resolution as something to be scared about. You should actually welcome it, because if nothing has transpired, then let the truth shine. And if nothing comes of this investigation, I will be the first to come out and retract my statements about police leadership. I will, I will admit that I was wrong if this investigation does not find anything. But the bottom line is that we have to have an investigation. The bottom line is that we already see inequities, and I just want to thank you all for doing something. George Floyd, thanks you.
Thanks for coming down. Ellis Kleinkoff, then Laura Rentsch, and then Dave M.
Hello and good evening, or should I say, good afternoon? I'd like to open by stating my appreciation for your decision to request investigation into Chief Midal. I will go as far as to suppose that we can expect to see evidence of Midal's disproportionate dispensation of justice, blatant misconduct, and political favoritism. The fact that City Council's 6 p.m. session was canceled on such short notice with very little public announcement is aggravating, to say the least. Regardless of intent and cause, this displays at best a lack of care for the working class of Spokane, and at worst, can be taken as malicious action to silence the people of Spokane and push the words and wills of the people out of the spotlight. A few fellow community members who are unable to attend this session have given me permission to quote their thoughts on the matter. "You don't have to worry about the opposition if the opposition can't attend the gated meetings. This is oppressive, to be honest. I made room on my schedule to attend tonight," end quote. "Even when members of the state want to benefit workers and oppress peoples, the system is set up so that the individual progressive actors can't adequately fight against the ruling class. Very disappointing and disgusting, but not at all surprising," end quote. "I feel like their technical inclusion of open forum doesn't make a difference if they change the time and don't tell anybody," end quote. "This disregard continues a scary pattern emerging in changes being made to the legal process of Spokane. If you are unable to keep our community's opportunity for involvement consistent, the least you can do is increase your effort to alert the community about the changes with a reasonable amount of time." Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Ellis. Laura Rentsch, and then Dave M., and then Justice for all.
Hi, I'm Laura Rentsch. I wasn't planning on being here either. And this also isn't what I was going to speak about, but when I was here earlier, and Council President mentioned that he just brought forth a resolution that he had to uphold the Spokane Municipal Codes, that sparked my interest on what I'm speaking about now. He said the city has, or you have an obligation to uphold the Spokane Municipal Codes, and that's why you were bringing forth the resolution. How do you pick and choose what codes you uphold? Well, I don't know. Do you pull them out of a hat? How do you, how do you do that? There's two municipal codes and RCW codes that you have refused to enforce for at least four years. One, if you'd like to write it down, Title 16A, Chapter 6D1, RCW 46.6171011 in specific, that's the Lime scooters. I'm sure everybody's rolling their eyes, but I don't really care. I don't really care what the Lime scooter riders themselves do and want to do to injure themselves. That's on them. They take that upon themselves. But everybody's well aware that most of the scooters on the sidewalks aren't supposed to be there in the downtown core. That's what these two codes are. I was getting a visually impaired person out of the street the other day that had been run into the street by a scooter. As that happened on my way back to get my car, I was injured. I wasn't on a scooter, because I wouldn't get on one. I have my head split open, I have a concussion, and I have a neck strain. And we can hopefully discuss that further later. That's not what I'm here to speak about. What I am here to speak about is those two codes are codes. They are here to be enforced. They haven't been. You can't pick and choose. You can't say, I'm going to enforce this code, but those two, I don't need to. They're not important. Nobody cares. There's a lot of people that care. So Missoula doesn't want these scooters around, neither does Copenhagen. And I know a lot of people here like the rules in Copenhagen. So let's, you know, let's put that aside, too. Does the HR department pick an outside investigator for this? Because these codes are not being enforced. They have not once been enforced.
Laura?
So let's do that.
Thanks for coming down. All right. We have Dave M. listed. Councilmember Kinnear wanted to raise a point of order about that.
Our rules say that you use your full and true name when testifying in open forum or legislative items.
All right. Thoughts from councilmembers? Mr. M.?
Are we, are we asking him, or us?
Well, I, I mean, he has said before he wouldn't do it. We'll ask him to come on here in a second, but I'm just, maybe I'll get him on the line, actually. Star 3? Dave, are you there? Dave, can you hear us?
Somebody's raising their hand. I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yeah. So Councilmember Kinnear...
Thank you. Hello, council.
No, before you start, Councilmember Kinnear's raised the issue that our council rules state that you need to state your full name. And in the past, you haven't been willing to do that, but I'm, I'm asking if you're able, or willing to, and then I'll have to consult with my councilmembers, depending on your answer.
Well, no, I, I think that we should just leave it the way it is.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Let me hear from my councilmembers. Councilmember Cathcart, and then Councilmember Bingle.
Just a point of order, I guess, does, does the real name matter? Because I believe we've had individuals, multiple individuals who've used fake pseudonyms in the past. Does the name actually matter, in terms of our rules?
It does say true name.
It's okay. It's whatever name you're using, normally. I mean, different people use different names in their lives, but they, I think the intent of the rule is whatever name you're using in the community that you use when you sign up, so.
I, I don't see how Dave M. violates that in any way. I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't see how that's a violation.
Okay. I'm just looking for council commentary. Councilmember Stratton?
I'm just looking at people in the audience that came...
I'm just looking at people in the audience that came down to testify, and they sign up, they wait in line, and they sign up, and they sit, and they wait to testify. And we know their first names and last names, and I don't understand why one individual who doesn't want to give us his full name should be allowed to speak. I mean, if everybody else has done the right thing, why do we have one person that doesn't want to do it? Why do we make an exception?
Councilmember Ringel.
I mean, we have comments, you know, that have already come in tonight about us not hearing from the public, you know, and not listening to the people of our city. I mean, there are other people who come in, and I mean, no disrespect, but I don't know if Sunshine is her real name. I love Sunshine, but I just don't know if that's her real name. So we're talking real and true name. Are we talking legal name, or are we talking real and true? Because there's two different definitions of legal name versus the name they go by in the community. If he goes by Dave M., then that's his real and true name. And so that's where it's, the difference of interpretation based on the two things being asked here, I think, is important.
So you'd want to know if that's what he goes by in the community? That would help you.
I don't think it would help me at all, because I would support somebody coming up and giving us Peter Pan and giving us testimony.
Okay. Councilmembers, come on.
Yeah, I remember we brought this up during retreat. We talked extensively about it. And I remember we specifically said that you would have to give your last name. It was why we created that rule. So I would support enforcing the rule.
And everything that Sunshine does, she signs her name Sunshine Wiegand. She sends emails, she sends letters. It's Sunshine Wiegand. It's not my job to check her ID, but she's giving me a first name and a last name. I just don't understand why one person that doesn't want to do it, I think that person should be held accountable to give us their first name and their last name.
So, yeah, so I guess if he just made up any M. name, we would never know. Dave Moriarty, I mean, you know, he could give us any M. name, right? I just don't know how it helps us, and I think these are the same points we raised when we were discussing this rule, but.
We can always check IDs if that's how specific we want to get.
I'm not saying that, but I'm saying it feels a little-
It's what we're asking in this situation.
I'm not asking for an ID.
We're asking for his real and true name, and how are we going to verify that?
We didn't say we were going to verify it. We're just asking for the name.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Well, usually they give their name, their name, whatever that name may be, and if they are a citizen of the city of Spokane, or sometimes we used to give addresses just to hear where the voice is coming from. Are you within the city? Are you outside the city? I want to hear what this person has to say, but consistency in our rules, which we just was, yanked our chain on, what do we enforce and what do we don't enforce. So if we're going to cherry pick who we enforce it for, then we're just as guilty. So I think our citizens want consistency as we go forward. If it's first and last name, whatever that may be, it may be Moriarty. It may be Mac. I don't know. But if he shows up every week and, hey, I am so-and-so Mac, I can live with that. It's just a consistency.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I think consistency is important, but so is access. And I think that we don't want to have this kind of chilling effect on folks who want to come down if they think that they're going to get grilled every time they do. And so I say, let the public speak.
But what is, if somebody doesn't want to give us their name, what does that mean? Is that something I should be afraid of, or intimidated, or threatened?
I just think that if we're not going to verify it, what the heck? What does it matter? Because, again, people can make up whatever name they want. If we're not verifying, we don't know that it's their real and true name. So what does it even matter? Again, not to say that I'm saying he can't, you know, if he wants to, but, you know, Harry S. Truman, the S. literally stood for the S. I mean, that actually happens.
Yeah, I'll just note, we had this debate, and we made a rule, so that's the question, is whether to enforce that rule or not, or how, what are the subtleties or nuances of that rule, I think. Councilmember Wilkerson.
I was just going to say, it just comes to value to me is, what you, if you cannot share your last name, then how much am I to value what you're saying? If you're not willing, if it's that important to you to wait in line or come down here to public counsel and sign in to identify yourself, but if you're not willing to do that, then how am I to value your comment? It's kind of almost being hidden in the shadows, you just saying something. So that's just a personal interpretation for me.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, Councilman Wilkerson is wrong. I mean, if that's how you're portraying yourself, and council has said that we may not believe you as much as somebody else, I mean, that's certainly the risk you take when you use a pseudonym, or you don't give your full last name. And I think that that's just kind of the way it is. So, but again, this is an individual who has spoken many, many, many times to this group, and there's no way to verify whether M. is his last name, or what that M. could stand for anyway. So, again, let him speak.
Does he ever show his face?
No.
So he doesn't show his face, and we don't know his last name?
That's correct.
Okay.
That was why, that was in part of why we created the rules. We said you should have to have some public comment. Council President, can we call the question? It doesn't require a vote.
Well, no, I'm looking for, there is a, it's a point of order, and-
You're looking for guidance.
Yeah. Councilmember Ringel.
I'm just saying, if he sends us an email, or if he gives us a phone call, right, he can leave whatever name he wants, he can put whatever name he wants on the email. We don't verify for identity or anything like that and those things. The message is getting sent one way or the other. Listen, I do agree that we should enforce our rules. I think it's a bad rule, and I voted against it then. I wouldn't support it again now, but I think, you know, again, we should be enforcing our rules. I just want to go on the record and say, this is a bad rule. I think, I understand why we have it, but again, it's still a bad rule.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
And just as you said, Councilmember Ringel, this person has all those ways to communicate with us within not coming to open forum and not sharing their last name. They can email, they can call. It's not essential, but in this particular space, that's what we have set up.
Councilmember Ringel.
I think there are legitimate reasons for people to not give us their full name, you know, people who, you know, may have been in an abusive situation or something like that. For them to not want everybody to know who they are might actually make some sense. And I think we would then be excluding those people from their ability to participate in their government, but, I mean, we make the rules.
I'm just going to say one thing, and then I got to be quiet. But this, to me, this is a huge creep factor. I mean, this is, this makes no sense to me. We are, this is one person. Everybody comes down here, we know them, we talk to them after the meetings, we know their names, whether that's their real names or not. I know these people. I know their first and last names. I have to give my first and last name. And for one person, I don't think we get a lot of these, I just think that this person should, this is creepy to me, and I don't know, there's probably a better way to express that, but it just feels wrong to me.
Please, no, yeah, that is a rule. No cheering.
Are you going to enforce that rule?
Yeah.
Because you're not going to enforce it.
Please, order. We have a process. All right, I've heard from everybody. I'm going to make a ruling subject to you voting against my ruling by a majority. And the ruling is that, as long as the rule is in place that we have, I'm going to ask the proposed speaker to give us what they consider their true name. We're not going to check their ID about it. If they're willing to do that, then they can testify. If not, they can't testify. So that's my interpretation of, I think, what the rule is. I appreciate everyone's perspective, and the next time we consider the rules, including if someone wants to make a proposed amendment to the rules at some point, we can do that as well. But that's my ruling, unless anyone has a motion to overrule that. Councilmember Cathcart.
Well, I would make a motion then, that we, I would make a motion that we suspend the rules to allow him to speak.
There's a motion on the table to suspend the rules, to allow him to speak without revealing his true name. There's a second. Any further conversation?
And we do this frequently, whether it's open forum, allowing additional speakers to speak beyond the timeline, whether it's extending our meetings past 9:30. We do this all the time, all the time. So this is not unique. And frankly, I think the most offensive thing we could do is to tell the public that we don't want to hear from them. And I think that that's kind of how this comes across. So I would prefer to allow him to speak, and then we can work on the rule.
Any other discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? And the motion to suspend the rules would just be to suspend, there would actually have to be another motion after that. But although-
For the purposes of allowing Dave to speak.
All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules for considering whether or not to let someone speak without testifying their true name. If you're in favor of that, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, nay.
Nay.
No, no. All right, so I think that motion fails. All right. Any other motions? All right. Dave M., if you're there, if you would like to give us what you consider your true first and last name, we'll let you speak today. If not, then we're going to rule you out of order for today while we continue to consider this.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Did you hear me?
Okay, before my time starts, Mr. President, let me just tell you, Betsy, you've met me. Other council members have met me.
Okay.
I am a person. I do exist.
Mr. M.
You've talked with me in person.
Mr. M., if you want to give your true name or not today?
You guys have wasted, you have wasted the public's time-
All right, Mr. M., you're out of order.
Going over this not once, but-
All right. All right, we'll move on. Justice for All next, then Rob Chase, and then Jacob Swartz.
Justice for All, that is my given name, as I've been doxxed by this city with my full birth date on display after I was arrested, and I was released against those charges in the interest of justice. So although I have a false arrest on my record, I am still doxxed by this city. So the fact that there's an argument that this person can come online anonymously or not, when I have so many people who know my information, is ridiculous. That's not what I came here to talk about. City Council, it is our right to speak, and this is our rule, to add open forum, and you obstruct, hinder, and damage our ability to do so by moving open forum wherever you please. March 27th, public forum started at 9:25 p.m. Today, public forum is about two hours early. It is our right to petition the government for redress of grievances, as stated in the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. The change of time buried in the middle of Page Four on the advance agenda, or on the agenda, was not clear enough for most people to see. There's no notifications on the website or Facebook, besides Facebook notifying people to sign up on open forum from 2:30 to 3:30, posted at 11:00 a.m. today, which says 6:00 p.m., it does not say the 6:00 p.m. meeting is canceled. Canceling a meeting because you don't have a packed agenda shows you don't give a shit about open forum, or the people who take time out of their day to speak. This is not democracy. This is the expansion of politics over solution and public dissent. I came here to speak about, on the police ombudsman report, and in addition to the special investigator, we need to empower the ombudsman's office to continue the investigation where they were stalled from pursuing the report further. We need a police ombudsman to work as intended and to be able to investigate fully issues as they are presented to their office, and should be barred in their expression of their findings. Shouldn't be barred. City Council, you have the power to enable the ombudsman's office to continue their investigation into the political collusion and creation of policies and databases between a city administration, the chief police, special business, and special business interests.
Thanks for coming down. Rob Chase.
I'm going to plug the media.
All right, I'll come back to him. Jacob Swartz, and then Gretchen McDevitt. Welcome to City Council, Jake.
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time. I'm actually, I wanted to speak on behalf of some of the businesses. I know not all I represent. My name is Jacob Swartz, and I own a small business and part of East Spokane Business Association. We have, I wanted to speak on behalf of the businesses regarding this ongoing investigation of Chief Midal. A number of businesses communicated with me, and I feel the same way, that we've seen a great effort by him to help improve the situation for our community. We would ask you not to pursue any more action against him. It's, from my understanding, the ombudsman completed an investigation and gave you guys five points to work on. It sounds like those things are going to be worked on. Biggest thing that I see is if we run him off, it's going to be difficult to find someone else who would be willing to take on that role, especially in spite of those, the current circumstances. Many of those who I see are pursuing him have either been, are from outside of our community, others are obvious activists with an anti-law agenda. This is a red flag for me to avoid this, as these people either have no vested interest in our community, or the health of our community at that. Business owners, in this community especially, are generally small business owners, like myself, scraping by, like the next one. Our employees are our family, and we seek to protect our family. When we see someone like Midal, who has tried to come and do some things for the business owners that are asking, they're not asking because they're trying to get more profit. They're asking because they're trying to protect their people. It seems like we should be-
Jake, we're at the end of your time today.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for coming down. Gretchen McDevitt, and then Tim Kinley, and then Steve Corker.
Hi, Gretchen McDevitt, Spokane, Washington. A couple of things. First, I believe if you have a rule, enforce it, just like if you have a code, enforce it across the board, or don't have it. So that's first. Second, I wanted to say, I was at, I'm in the Comstock Neighborhood Council, and we had a presentation, or, yeah, by Mark Carlos, and he did an amazing, he's Betsy Wilkerson's assistant, and he did an amazing job, very informative. And also, today I talked to Shay Blackwell to get some information, because I was pretty confused about today, with the meeting canceled and that, and she was very helpful, too. So some good assistance. And the real reason I'm here is to say, I, a couple of weeks ago, when I was watching, I noticed, I guess the rule is still that you can stand and turn your back on people. I find that very rude, but I find that especially rude when it's the people turning their back when I'm speaking, or anybody's speaking, and you can see them on the TV. People standing up, turning their back, sitting down, standing up, turning back, sitting down. So if you're going to not allow booing, but to me, turning your back is like booing, then please at least don't allow people to turn their back, or stand up even in support, when it's visible on the TV. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down, Gretchen. All right, Tim Kinley, and then Steve Corker, and hopefully Rob Chase, he gets back.
Tim Kinley, Chair, Council. So in what world is talking to constituents a reason for removal? In what world does speculation rise to being removed? And in what world does speculation, after an investigation clears someone, rise to removal? So it happens in the world of political hit job. I'm here to speak on behalf of Chief Midal. I escaped Minnesota about four years ago because I saw what was coming. I lived in the community of George Floyd. There was really some bad policing going on there. This is not, it's not even close to what was going on in Minneapolis. I was involved in police accountability groups. And it was a tragedy, what happened in Minnesota. That's not happening here, and so I speak in support. Compelled speech. Having to give a name, having to give a city, that's compelled speech. It's unconstitutional. I agree with a couple council members here that let people talk. That's what it's about. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. Steve Corker, and then Rob Chase.
Steve Corker, tonight I'm representing the Landlord Association at its president. At our last meeting, we had two items brought up. One had to do with the Life Stories rental portal, where individuals evidently went into the process, were approved, and are on a waiting list. And it's taken four to five months for the response. When I checked with them recently, they said they're still waiting for the funding to come from the city. We have examples of cases where people basically are now five, six months behind. They are in the portal, so we cannot evict. We cannot impose upon them any responsibilities. If they come out that funding is not available, it'll be impossible for them to make that up under the guidelines that are going to expire on the 31st. If the funding is available, it needs to be distributed. If not, landlords and tenants need to know. If not, landlords and tenants need to know it. The second point I'd just like to bring up, I was a part of the press conference this morning. I think it's critically important for public officials, police, and fire in our industry to basically help us solve the problems this community faces in public safety. The distribution of information and data is absolutely essential in what we do, and I have nothing but respect for Chief Midle and attempts to work with not only members of the business community, but work with those individuals that are involved with justice reform, work with the N double A C P, work with the organizations, help them give data. You've got to expect the privacy of people, but we need that information to come up with solutions. I'm facing that in the real estate industry as we go through the quagmire of trying to deal with the laws. And I just have worked with Chief Midle over years, both through the council when I served on the council, and especially now, dealing with this rental crisis. I have nothing respect for him, and I appreciate his willingness to work with all segments of the community to give them the data necessary to solve our critical problems. Thank you.
Thanks. And Mr. Corker, just to give you some information on the rental assistance, I heard about a week ago from CHHS that they just recently got the official notification, and they're working on the contracts to do it. It's going to be a few weeks to come, but they say they haven't been able to do it now, but it's in process for that money.
Amen, thank you.
Yep. All right, Mr. Chase, you're last speaker. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you, I'm Rob Chase, I currently live in Spokane Valley, but I came here 49 years ago during Expo 74, and I worked at the Goodyear across the street from it, but it was a really nice time in Spokane. They cleaned up the old rail yards, and it was like a different spirit in that time than I feel now. The city fathers that we had back in then, I think, really cared about the city, and it was just so fresh and nice, and it seems like it's changed so much since then, so I'm speaking in support of Chief Midle. And I'm particularly sympathetic to a public official that's getting railroaded by fringe groups, I've been there myself. And I think we need to have real discussions, genuine, robust discussions by genuine stakeholders, and not frivolous fishing expeditions or things like that, because we do have problems to solve. We've got to consult all the genuine stakeholders, and with that consensus, you know, we can start putting things back together and get back to where we need to be. I also, I was raised in Seattle, and I remember Century 21 in 1962, that world's fair. I watched them build the Space Needle when I was a kid. And Seattle was a lot different then, it was fresh spirited, the outlook for the future was great, that's why they call it Century 21. But Seattle is dying, and Spokane's right behind it, I think, too. So that's our challenge, I think, is to work together and have robust discussions on these matters instead of not going off on rabbit trails. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. All right, that brings us to the end of open forum. We do have some board and commission appointments, Ms. Fister.
And on the first one, did you want to defer that one indefinitely? It was the Design Review Board.
That person withdrew their application.
All right, so you want to bring a motion to defer it indefinitely?
Oh, yes, a motion to defer that Design Review Board indefinitely.
Okay, move to second, any discussion?
Why did they withdraw?
She sent an email, and I think...
She said something about the time commitment or something, I think.
She had something else she was looking at as well.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Do you want me to find it, send it to you?
Did I get a second?
All those, yeah. Mr. Councilmembers, opposed, second. All those in favor of deferring the Design Review Board appointment indefinitely, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, no. Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred indefinitely. All right, you could take the next ones. If you list all their names all at once.
Appointment of Casey Bowers to Community Housing and Human Services Board for a three-year term from May 1, 2023 to May 1, 2026. Appointment of David Edwards to Community Housing and Human Services Board for a three-year term from May 1, 2023 to May 1, 2026. And appointment of Leslie K. Hope to the Community Housing and Human Services Board for a three-year term from May 1, 2023 through May 1, 2026. And the appointment of Kareem Habib to the Bicycle Advisory Board for a three-year term from May 1, 2023 to May 1, 2026.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, no. Any abstentions? All right, they're all confirmed. Thank you so much for your service. If you're interested in serving on a city board or commission, we have a website at my Spokane that can show you what the work is, generally what the terms of the current people, so you can see if there's a vacancy or one coming up. And if you're interested for just about all of them, you apply directly to the mayor's office, the mayor makes a selection and then brings them to us. We interview them and then vote, just like we did. Next is the consent agenda, nobody has signed up from the public to testify on it, but if you could go ahead and read it, and then we can take a vote.
Council President, could we take 5C separately, please?
Okay, except for 5C.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchases from Western State's CAT Spokane of one CAT backhoe and one CAT loader for the Fleet Services Department to replace units that have reached the end of their economic lives, $400,431.05 including tax. Number two, preapproval to purchase leased 12 units for various departments to allow the city to purchase the units at the time they become available and to avoid price increases from the time a quote is received, $1,695,000. Number three, contract assignment and assumption with Proclaim Liberty Spokane for utility infrastructure improvements at Liberty Park Terrace Apartments, utilizing connecting housing to infrastructure program chip grant funds, $680,461. Number four, agreement with Better Health Together Spokane to administer the Youth Homeless Demonstration Project planning grant, $134,879. Item number five, multiple family housing property tax exemption conditional agreements with A. Jordan Benson Episcopal for the future construction of approximately 21 units at partial numbers 35294.14 and 35294.1815, commonly known as 713 East 29th Avenue. B. 3508 East 34th LLC for the future construction of approximately four units at partial number 35342.2425, commonly known as 3508 East 34th Avenue. 5C will be considered separately. The conditional agreements will ultimately result in the issuance of final certificates of tax exemption to be filed with the Spokane County Assessor's Office post-construction. Number six, consultant contract amendment with Stan Tech Consultant Services Incorporated Spokane for the Northeast Environmental Protection Agency Communitywide Assessment Grant to Include American Rescue Plan Act Funding to leverage and expand the sub-area plan for this area from June 30, 2023 to December, through December 30, 2026, $330,791.91. Number seven, consultant agreement with Geo Engineers Incorporated Spokane for Part 12D Comprehensive Assessment and Report for Upper River Dam Hydroelectric Project Phase 1, $108,600 plus tax if applicable. Number eight, contract renewal with Infra Public Sector Incorporated Tampa, Florida for annual contract maintenance of the Fire Department's Computer-Aided Dispatch CAD System, covering maintenance fees and non-Microsoft software licenses, and adding four additional CAD mobile licenses for use by the Spokane Fire Department for May 1, 2023 through April 30, 2024, approximately $97,331.77 including tax. Number nine, master contract renewal two of two with Camtech Incorporated Spokane for camera video management software and access control systems installation and maintenance for asset management from January 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, $350,000. Number 10, one-year value blanket renewal two of two with Camtech Incorporated Spokane for all hardware and software licensing and door maintenance they provide from March 1, 2023 through December 31, 2023, $295,000. Number 11, report of the mayor of pending eight claims and payments approved, they approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through April 14, 2023. Total $6,876,860.57 with Parks and Library claims, approved by the respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $6,392,361.76. B. payroll claims of previously approved obligations through April 15, 2023, $8,764,760.50. Number 12, city council meeting minutes for April 20, 2023.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, no. Any abstentions? All right, the consent agenda, except for 5C, is approved, and if you would go ahead and read 5C.
5C, multiple family housing property tax exemption conditional agreement with Grandview Washington LLC for the future construction of approximately 348 units and multiple parcel numbers, commonly known as 3000 West 14th Avenue.
All right, all those in favor of approving that matter, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, no?
Nay.
Take that as three noes.
I was about to say, I heard three nays, I didn't hear any noes.
Okay, I translated. Okay, any abstentions? All right, that passes. All right, then we have three resolutions, and unless there's an objection, since they're so similar, I propose that we take them all at once. Seeing no objections, go ahead and read the titles of all three.
Resolution 2023-32, joint resolution with Spokane County in the matter of authorizing the Spokane Airport Board to execute a public water line easement to the city of Spokane. The no-cost water utility easement is 3,099 lineal feet by 30 feet wide for a total of 2.13 acres, and is located in Spokane County Assessor Tax Parcels 25320.111 and 25335.0501. Resolution 2023-33, joint resolution with Spokane County in the matter of authorizing the Spokane Airport Board to convey property in Spokane County Assessor Parcels 14025.9004, 14022.9002, .0601, .0501, .0101, 1533, excuse me, 15355.9007, 15341.9008, 15341.9009, .9001 comprising approximately 9.585 acres of land to Spokane County for right-of-way border easement and slope easement necessary for improvements to Craig Road. Resolution 2023-34, joint resolution of Spokane County in the matter of authorizing the Spokane Airport Board to sell property located in the Spokane County Assessor's Tax Parcels, 15344.0102, .0103, .0104, .0105, .0106, .0111, and .0113 comprising approximately 63.27 acres of land located generally fronting on Craig Road south of McFarland Road at Spokane International Airport.
We don't have any requested public comment, any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, that passes unanimously. And then our last item is Special Consideration S2, if you want to give us the report.
Okay. City Clerk Report on Initiative Number 2023-3 filed by Brian Hanson prohibiting encampments near schools, parks, playgrounds, and childcare facilities. As was discussed earlier, per SMC 2.02040, upon receiving the report of this initiative from the city clerk, the city council may pass the measure as proposed, reject the initiative measure, and propose a new one dealing with the same subject to be considered as council legislation, or submit the initiative measure to the voters on its own motion. If the council does not pass the measure as proposed or submit the initiative measure to the voters, the initiative and the ballot title and summary of the measure will be forwarded by the city clerk to the city hearing examiner, who shall issue a formal written opinion as to the legal validity and effect on the proposed measure within 14 days of receiving the measures. Once the hearing examiner issues a written opinion, the initiative measure sponsor will have seven days within which to notify the city clerk in writing of the sponsor's decision to proceed with collecting signatures for the initiative measure or to revise the initiative measure based on the hearing examiner's written opinion. And the deadline for submitting petition signatures for placement on the November 7 general election is Monday, June 12, 2023, and 2,624 signatures are needed, valid signatures.
Any motions anyone wants to make?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right.
So is that would be for the council to adopt as ours?
Yep.
And they wouldn't have to collect signatures?
Well, not just that, it would become the law, doesn't even just go right to the ballot. It would actually become the law.
Okay, so if we want to do something else, we have to make a different motion, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Councilmember Catherine. Yeah, so I'm typically a pretty big fan of letting citizen groups gather their signatures and qualify for the ballot. I take a pretty big exception in this case, because this one follows pretty closely with something that I myself presented to this council back in the fall. And so I think it's very important, I think there's a lot of positives to it, and so that's why I'm willing to second this, which is a little unusual for me, I will say, but I do think in this case it makes a lot of sense. Councilmember Mingle.
Yeah, I'll say the reason why I made the motion here is because this is an issue that we've talked about extensively. The verbiage is pretty simple, again, it's just prohibiting encampments near schools, parks, playgrounds, and childcare facilities, so within 1,000 feet. Again, it's something that Councilmember Cathcart and I supported in the sit-in lie ordinance. Again, I think it's a great thing for the city, and so I think it's just, I think it would behoove us as a city just to adopt it and move forward.
Councilmember Canir.
Has this gone through the hearing examiner process?
No, nor City Legal.
Okay.
Councilmember Supon.
Yeah, I don't support adopting it today. I'd be very interested in hearing some City Legal feedback on that. I know when we talked about it previously, there was discussions about how much land you could exclude, so I'd be interested in hearing more about that from City Legal.
Councilmember Mingle.
I think City Legal gave us their opinion on this, and I mean, when we look at, again, cities like Los Angeles, who in their sit-in lie ordinance, they have well over 60% of their city covered in their sit-in lie ordinance, has not been successfully challenged in court yet, this is nowhere near that amount. And again, it's just the reason why Councilmember Cathcart and myself fought for this so hard is because this is where families congregate, this is where kids are congregating, and it seems to make a ton of sense for the health and safety of the city to put this forward. And so I think we have been given a legal opinion on this. Again, maybe not the verbatim language that's in there, but this very idea, and I think it's in, I think it's both very legal and beneficial for the city, so I think it's a good thing for us to adopt.
Councilmember Canir.
I want the verbatim language. I don't want us to surmise, or that we say that City Legal looked at it because they looked at sit-in lie. I want them to look at this particular thing and give us their opinion. I also want the hearing examiner to look at it, too.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna, I'm opposed to adopting it without a legal opinion and really seeing the GIS of what this particular language would do. The opinion I recall from City Legal is that even much narrower restrictions than this would probably run afoul of Boise v. Martin, so I would, you know, and maybe we're just remembering it differently, but I would love them to come and tell us about that. So I'm going to be opposing the motion to add it to our city code. And also, we haven't had any, if we really were going to propose this, I think we should propose it straight up and have commentary from the public right now, it would somehow become the law with, you know, five minutes of discussion. So I think that's my sense of it.
Yeah.
But other, Councilmember Mingle.
I would lastly just say, I mean, we absolutely did have public input on this, and we did not listen, which is why a citizens' initiative is now being brought forward. This is, again, language, as I'm, again, remembering from Councilmember Cathcart's very detailed ordinance, I mean, it seems, again, very, very similar to that language. And so I'm just, I'm just going to say, I think, I think it is both legal and good to get done. And again, I think we've had a lot of public discussion on this, but, you know, I welcome all the public discussion if this, if this motion fails, because again, I think that what we'll hear is the exact same thing, people in the community saying, yes, we want camping prohibited by schools, parks, playgrounds, and childcare facilities, so.
All right, any other discussion on the motion to adopt this as an ordinance today? All right, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
No? Councilmember Canir sticking with her Scottish language regardless. Anyway, the motion fails, so that will go to the hearing examiner and the regular process. All right, and before we go, we did give everyone notice last week that we moved our legislative, but based on the feedback, sounds like we could have done a better job. But I will note for next week, there is only, not even one, there's only a first reading, there's no resolutions or ordinances, just a consent agenda. So I'm wondering, again, will public...
Excuse me, oh, and, oh, never mind, that was deferred to me, I'm sorry, I thought it was a week, but that's right.
So I'm wondering if people want to...
Do it again?
Do it again, except do a much better job of promoting it, just to show that we can, but anyway, I'm looking for it.
I hate to do that twice in a row.
Well, do you want to come back for a meeting and just have a first reading?
I was just gonna, any prediction if we're going to have a lot of things added to the agenda, because this week there were several things that were added in the briefing that made it a lot longer than expected? No way to predict that?
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything, but, Councilmember Mingle.
I just think there's a couple really big things that are going to be discussed in that, even if it's a first... that, even if it's a first reading. For example, the first reading of our Safe Open Spaces Act, which I know a lot of people are going to want to weigh in on. I think it would be a disservice to do it with an item that big where there's going to want to be a lot of people talking on it. So I would, I would say no, reminding everybody I won't be here next week and so I don't have to deal with the consequences of this decision.
Just qualify then.
Councilmember Canir.
No, I was just going to throw this at him, but I won't.
Okay.
That would be harassment, I know.
Okay, well, it's up to the body. So I'm not hearing any motions to advance or unless I am, I don't know.
No, it's not worth it.
No, oh yeah, I was like, I'm, I'm open to it, but.
Okay, all right.
While we're on the topic of canceling potential future meetings, I want to bring up summer and see if council's open to canceling another summer or another week around August 1.
We already do that.
We've canceled one and we're open to doing two weeks to allow staff time to plan vacations around those weeks.
Which one did we cancel already?
We canceled the 7th, August 7th.
So your proposal will be to schedule, cancel the 14th?
Yeah, I was talking about earlier, or the 31st. The thing with the 31st is that is a public safety committee meeting. The 14th is urban experience. If we cancel one of the committees, we could always, if we're willing to double up one of those days.
14th wouldn't be, oh, it's the 31st.
Urban experience.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, wait, public safety is what day?
The 31st because of the 4th of July, we bumped everything back a week for the 4th of July.
Okay, got it.
I think.
But it would be the 4th, oh, are you, which day are you, because the 14th would be finance then?
No.
If public safety is the 31st.
There's still four weeks in August.
But the 31st would be public safety, then it would be urban experience.
And, yeah. We bumped it up a week.
But.
Jacobi, what's on the schedule right now?
We could probably talk. Experience on the 14th.
It is, okay. All right, so that's already been bumped up is what you're saying?
Right. Everything's been adjusted already.
Okay.
So it would be canceling. I, I think it allows staff the flexibility to travel more over the summer and when beyond one week window, which I think is important for summer travel.
Canceling the 21st?
The 14th.
The 14th or the 31st, if, if we're willing to double up a committee, I think, on the 31st.
When are those twins due?
The 21st, but they'll likely be here before the 21st, so I, I probably won't be at the 14th either way.
Okay.
All right.
Any other feedback about, we don't have to make the motion today, but any other feedback for the good of the order?
I think the sooner the better for people to travel.
Okay, well, are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion to cancel 14.
Okay, I'll second.
So, so when, when would be canceled right now?
7th, the motion would be 7th and 14th would be, oh, 7th is already canceled. The motion is to also cancel the 14th.
Okay.
But we still preserve the public safety meeting on the 31st.
That's right.
I know you've felt discriminated against.
The 14th is finance.
No, it's urban experience.
Urban experience. It normally would be, but.
21st is finance.
Yep.
You can't cancel urban experience. You can't cancel me.
Everyone's at the lake, you can do it.
That hurts my feelings.
Okay?
Councilmember Stratton, you can propose a motion to double up.
I'm not getting into it, just tell me what.
Okay.
Do the Thursday briefing.
So there's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion about canceling the 14th? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no?
Nay.
Another nay.
Any abstentions?
No.
All right, the 14th is canceled and we'll get that notice out pronto, in case anyone's counting on open forum on the 14th. All right, well, thanks everyone for your good humor and please take care of yourself and if you can, take care of somebody else. We're adjourned.
So does that mean two weeks?